If it's a, if it's a problem, then we probably should not do this. Since we're gonna be bonding for those others. Anyway, that's I'm just.
Unless we bond for that now, right?
Well, except we're not gonna, oh, highway, are we gonna do that? Are you gonna do the highway building next year? I don't know.
I think we have to at some point, you know, I don't know how long are we gonna expect those guys to let the line that, to prep an old building?
I almost think you can pass a resolution with the dollar amounts, but you don't have to borrow up to that limit.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's merely a formality so that you can actually go out and do this if you do want. And you have it in place.
So we can, we can vote to bond or we're gonna necessarily have to execute that plan right away?
Would that, would that extend the term passes fiscal year?
Might. Have to check.
You wanna wait on this till next month?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there gonna be a problem, Nancy, if we wait till next month?
We're gonna have none of the meeting coming up.
That's true.
So your question is, can we add highway garage?
Yes. Is Mike, I mean, am I the only one that feels that way?
Well, we need a highway garage, but we need to be able to pay for it too.
Yep.
So can we add a highway garage and will that affect the time limit on this if we wait till the next fiscal year?
If we pass a resolution for this, will that extend the opportunity to borrow against the hangar into next year? What's the, what's the cost again?
See, and again, if we think, if we think we can bond, if we think we can bond the garage and the water systems for less rate than this, we shouldn't do this.
Oh, I agree. And I think the water system, I think we will be able to, we're gonna be able to get probably zero interest loan from the state for your water will probably fund. Or very, very, very low.
That's the right ability. If, if we get, if, if we get to the point that our fund balance is ours, to the point of bleeding?
When will that be?
I don't know. It's an opportunity, is basically what it gives you.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity to help restore fund balance.
And again, we, if we use the, can you for next, our next meeting, Lloyd's session, come up with the two, the two month figure that Elaine talked about for operating for each of those funds?
For like A, B?
Right. Take the fund balance, and how does that stack up the two months of expenses for that fund?
Well, you wrote the whole budget in two hours, so I guess I need that.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt Barbara will be.
Superwoman.
Barbara will be the scribbler.
And change that quarter to five?
Something like that, yeah. I don't remember quarter up before.
You think you've got problems, Elaine?
I, I'm very happy in the library.
Okay.
Nancy, you have no idea yet on sales tax, right?
Uh, no, we still haven't received the check.
What the county's talking about.
We're in pretty good shape, actually.
The first two, half of the year, we are.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay. If you look under sales tax, we see what we received so far.
Yeah.
Um, and you see what we have to spend, I mean, yet to receive, I think we're gonna be okay in that respect. We try to be really conservative with that.
Yeah.
All right, so we're.
So that'll help.
We're not really tabling the bonders, we're just gonna include the discussion, or continue the discussion next, next meeting.
Right.
All right, resolution to appoint Pamela Katanzky as authorized officer for the town, seeing a key bank credit card account affected immediately. Tell us about this, Georgette.
When we set up our credit card with Key Bank, they, it was required that you had to have an authorized officer who would put people on the account, take people off whenever needed, and being now going to retire at the end of the year, I wanted to move on this and have her added now, and she'll remove me effective January 1st. So we keep things going, no problems.
Okay. Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Extention, motion carried. Okay, next up is a discussion about the, Ed Fisher. We received an email from Patadziski that I believe I forwarded to you, maybe if I can send your packet, that we will submit a grant application to the FAA for, for two different things. I'm sorry, this, this is just for the, right.
Where is it going?
It's the last page on that.
On the, on the added, the thing you added?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought it was on the last page of the book.
No.
Yeah. Got it.
This is for the pilot's lodge, right Frank?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the title of the statement.
Oh, right there, yeah, okay, yeah. General Aviation Business Office Renovation. What used to be called the Pilot's Lodge is attached to the old hangar.
They have to, they don't like that term already.
What?
They don't like the lounge term.
Oh, no, right, it's not, it's not a lounge, it's for a pilot, if a, if a charter plane comes to town, the pilot, he's somewhere to hang his hat, check his email, do his business. The old area where that's done in the old hangar is a great hangout for the raccoons, they really like it. It's, it, it's in horrible disrepair, hasn't been, I mean, many, money spent on it in many, many years. We believe until we get a new hangar that it needs to be improved. So Pat is talking about $380,000 for all costs, it includes design, construction, and, what's the ACI you could ever remember that at? Anyway, so total $360,000. We'll submit the plan, the grant application. There's always a local portion. Typically, it's 10%. We were successful in the other ones that we did, we said we would commit to 50%. That gives us extra points when they grade our application. What Pat's proposing is we actually do 16% of that amount as a local share, because that 1% over 50 gives us even more points on our, when grading our application. So he's suggesting that we, that is part of the process. First of all, we have to agree to submit the application for the New York State DOT, the actual name of that thing is New York State DOT Aviation Grant, and we agree to pay a local share, the 10% minimum, he's suggesting 16%.
What's special about this building, make it cost $380,000?
Yeah.
Which would be one of the nicest homes in the scene.
It needs.
Which includes design, construction.
It needs Frank, a roof.
A roof.
A bathroom, complete gut renovation.
No, but can we build something new? We can build one of the nicest homes in the scene for $380,000.
Home, absolutely, commercial space is a whole different deal.
No, I'm saying, what's different about it that we, that we couldn't call a local contractor and say, build me a pilot's lodge?
You just have to pay for billing rates for one thing.
Well, that, I know, but that's still.
I think this is on the cost.
You don't need a, you don't need a $2,000, that would build, Sam, how big a house can you build? $380,000?
It's like 150 to 200 square feet, so 50, 100, 1600 square feet, yeah. Maybe 2,000 square feet.
2,000 square foot house.
Yep.
It just seems high, to me, it does.
Our portion is 60,800.
Yeah.
But one thing to consider is, that cost, how much does heat, Frank? What am I right, 6,000 a year or something like that?
But still, that, that'll go, that's in a different budget. That's not included in this.
No, but if you build a new building.
The heating system is for that.
It costs $6,000 a year to heat them.
I understand, but if you build, if you build something new, you could probably heat it cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay, how much is the 16%?
60,800.
So can we build it for 60,800?
No.
Ask the question.
No, okay, 'cause this.
Ask the question.
'Cause this is grant.
Right, we're gonna try to get a grant for it. The question is can we build something for 60,800?
Plus, this, this might bring in more revenue for the airport because of general, general aviation will more inclined to fly in if they have this area, plus buy fuel.
That is the goal, and that is the thought process and the projection.
Right.
That if people know we have this great business center for pilots to stop, and refuel, and also have a nice area to come in and do their, whatever work they need to do, even, this isn't even for charter people, it's for people flying over that need fuel. So are we gonna land in Messina and use the nice facility they have there? We're gonna land somewhere else where there's maybe.
I could ask the same question though, whether it's grant money or not, is.
I agree.
Are we building a Cadillac lounge, or are we building something that we need?
I have not seen.
Because in either case, it's more, too much money being spent by the FAA and too much money in our, in our share. If it was 200,000, 16% would be for 32,000, not 60 some thousand. So it's.
And we certainly can ask him to retool it and look at a different amount. The deadline is looming.
This is a conservative, not a conservative.
Yeah, he says they're conservative, yeah, he said, right, he said, when he says conservative, he means generous, it may be lower. So anyway.
You have the cost of the building, you have the cost of the design, the cost of.
Bathroom, maybe a shower, I don't know, but.
Yeah, design, construction.
We would recruit that in heating costs in about, probably 12 or 14 years.
Where do we get the 60,000?
That's my next question.
Hey, where can I?
Where do we get the 60,800 for?
Yeah, a lot of our airport grants.
Well, everybody in Messina better go start playing the slot machines, so we can get some more compback money.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, and again, that's why the question has to be asked. Is it what we need, or is it the best that can be provided?
We certainly can ask.
You know, 'cause the lower, the lower we can lower the $60,000 number, the better we'll be.
I agree. We certainly can ask him that, and I think the sequence is, we apply for the grant at this amount. We get the grant, then we do actual design, if we get the grant. So I'm sure the state won't mind if we say we don't need all the money to approve for it. We've changed the scope of the project, and it's now lower, the amount's lower, I don't know if the state's gonna object to that, the DOT. So we can give them the go ahead if it's something you wanna do, and then we'll tell them, when it comes, if, if this is successful, it comes time to actually design something, we want it to be more conservative than what we initially were going.
Frank, you're around here all the time, or not all the time, but you're around there, this, will this project, you think, is there a use for this, and is?
I think so, yeah.
Does the pilot?
We, Joe's had several comments of people that have flown in and made comments about our facility, that they are very.
And people that use it on a regular basis, one of the government agencies. First they called me, said, I don't wanna be quoted because I'm not authorized to speak for the agency, but I fly out there all the time, and I won't sit in the chair during that building. And I'm not comfortable going in that building.
I'm gonna say it, you guys have to decide what you wanna do with your airport, right? Everybody else is doing something with theirs, so either we do something with it, or we don't, and. And obviously.
Well, Frank, we're doing a lot.
I, I understand that, John, yes, we are, but, but we, we do the, you know, the runways don't make people come in and.
Oh, you know.
Spend gas.
The markings, they have the markings.
You're, you're right. Unfortunately, we actually do that.
You know, place to get a cup of coffee, a place to, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's just vending machines, but at least there's something in there, they can go and get a candy bar, they can get a cup of, you know, soup or something they can heat up.
They get, they have none of that right now.
No, no, they're good.
So we're going.
And, and, and it's located in the hangar?
It's, it's attached to the old hangar, the old hangar building.
Is that the right place for it?
That's where the fuel is. You don't want it over at the terminal, because then they have to get, they got a plane, they gotta come over here anyways to decide if it's field.
And that's exactly what I was at, thinking, you know, is, is, if, if we spent $380,000 on a terminal expansion, that would be money well spent, I think. $380,000 off, out and about, then it becomes questionable, but that's the only reason I'm asking.
Yep.
I understand. Wasn't there talk, we're talking about using the, the house?
I think we already checked into that.
We, oh, we can, we can.
It's considered an obstruction, and you're not supposed to apply.
Okay.
Which is part of the settlement, we, part of the, one of the, the relicensing review settlement. We, we would end up building a new hangar that, that NIPA would commit to lease to cover part of that cost. Won't there be a facility in that new hangar like this? And I think the short answer is, yeah, there probably would. There won't be a grant to help cover part of the cost of that hangar. The NIPA lease will help pay it, certainly. But so, and at the end of the day, we run the risk of having a new hangar with similar facilities and these other facilities at the old hangar, where the fuel farm is. The, the, I believe the airport design plan, capital improvement plan, follows for the new hangar to be built over by the terminal where the.
Adjacent to the, then we call it.
Right next, right next by the native hang, native trading hang. So again, that's away from the fuel. So I think, in my mind, the best case scenario, we have a new hangar over by the other hangar near the terminal, we would have an improved business operations base at the old hangar, near the fuel farm.
So logistically, what you're saying, Frank, if I read you right, is it almost has to be located by the fuel?
I'm not saying it has to. It's like, you know, you pull up to get gas at a gas station, the store's right there, okay?
It makes more sense.
It makes more sense, but if, if it says that we don't have spending money on a building, to build a building, then they, you know, they'll travel over there, get gas, go back to the building, I guess.
I, I thought, I, I mean, the words we used at one time was, when we found out about, you know, the reopener and some of the items in there, that they could possibly get creative and add that to the new hangar. And I thought that we, we had had discussion to those, to that point.
There was, but I don't know.
But if this is, if, if, the way this presented, it's a standalone thing.
Yes.
Does someone have to act on it?
And we may need both.
What's that?
We may need both anyway.
The, the issue is, is you have to, I think the filing period.
No, no, I'm just, both lounges, both lounges is what I'm saying.
Oh, both lounges.
There is an impending deadline for the application, and I think that is why it's on the agenda.
You know, I didn't, we've done it before, where we make, we accept it to go all, and, you know, we did it with the garage, we basically said we're doing it, and then pulled the plug.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't like refusing your hand?
A, we're not guaranteed we're getting it. B, if we do get it, we can have.
We can.
Pat, scale it down to where it's basic enough that provides for the pilots and drops our, our contribution down. So if we're not in jeopardy, if we're in jeopardy of losing it, I think we're worse off by not passing it tonight. But if we get it, let's, let's work on that, where it's the bare minimum enough just to provide enough for these pilots. It's 100% better than what they got, they don't have nothing right now.
Let me do this, I'll make a motion and we proceed with the grant application.
I'll second it. Do we wanna discuss that? He's recommending the 16%.
Yes.
And we've always been, 10% is the minimum.
Yes.
Do we wanna mess with that at all?
What's that? A, we have to do a percentage in the motion, that's right.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah, okay, all right, let's talk about that right now.
11, 12, 13, 14, 15?
Sure we can, yeah, sure we can. We did 15 before, and that was, he's pretty sure that's the reason we were successful in the last application.
Right.
So, and again, so he's recommended, so I, in my opinion, we should do at least 15, which is a little bit less than 16, but I don't know. So it's gonna take the 60, 60,000 down to what? 15 is percent less.
18, 19.
You guys figure that, take me, take me out, can you figure that out in English?
380?
38, 19, 57,000?
Yeah.
Well, that. Probably, if he's recommending the 16% versus 15%, you know, you're only talking about a couple thousand dollars.
Right, and, and, so let me amend my emotion to say, grant application with 16% local share. You want, is, are you still second on that, or?
I do, because I don't wanna let this pass by in the, we'll scale it down.
Right, so there's the motion now.
I'm sorry, who first did?
I did, I'm making it.
Oh, you're making the motion, Joel, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
We can scale it down or beat our knees, and it could be.
Can we get an house in the parking lot, and that would be.
Sir, um, let me ask you this, obviously they're charging for the grant, and it goes by the amount.
No, they don't charge us to prepare the grant application.
Okay, so there's no difference whether you apply for a $380,000 grant or a $160,000 grant, there's not a charge difference.
They'll make the money on the back end. On the design and that's the construction. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Extention, motion carried.
It would be, if they got the grant, it would be a great project for your airport committee to be involved in.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And they're already doing great work, by the way. They're out securing some letters of support for this application.
Frank, I gotta ask this, if there was a rental car company, where can it be located? Does it have to be outside the terminal, does it have to be outside? Could it, could cars be available near that, say we do that, for the pilots?
Near the terminal.
They could? Okay.
Sure, there's parking space there.
There is?
We can make parking space.
Because sometimes the claim is the pilot doesn't have a car either, and sometimes they like to come into the, the village and, okay.
There, there's a, there's parking areas identified now, we can put additional ones in, and we can identify, that's what it's for. We could, there's a, there's a big apron right there.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, we've already from Kaper calling me back about the lease, I didn't get to call, obviously. So at some point, I'll take a 10 minute recess, and I'll call him. I have an idea that I wanna talk to him about as far as the lease, did we already do that, we already approved it, I guess, never mind.
No, we didn't.
We didn't?
We did put it in, yeah.
You just said that.
No, we just, I just said, right, yeah. So what I'll do is I'll call him beforehand, and I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but in the meantime. All right, let's get through the rest of these, then we'll talk about, we'll take a break, and then we'll come back and talk about the budget a little more. We have one other addition, where did I put that? Oh, right.
What's what? Do we?
We have another addition right here.
Where's that?
We, when we started, when the, we started talking about the new phone system, no, when we started talking about our, our, what's the word I'm looking for? Information technology, we had a meeting with NCC Systems, who was a successful bidder on that contract. One of the things that we talked about was security, obviously, that's an important part of why we did this. In that discussion, they informed us that the, it's this thing right here, guys.
The NCC thing?
Yeah, the, in, in that discussion, they informed us that our phone switches that we have is outdated, and, and makes it more difficult to, to upgrade the security and also for our new phone system. So they're supposed to give us all the new phones yesterday, and they heard we're getting a new switch, and they said, we might as well wait, or Nancy told them we should wait, and she asked me about it, and I agreed. So we told them to wait, hold off on the new phone installation, it'd kill me to do that until we get the switch thing. So we asked the, this is the right one, I forgot the wrong one, anyway. We asked them to, NCC System, that's right there, to, to give us a proposal, what it would be for a switch. So we have that here, it is, it says, we propose hereby to furnish this material and labor complete in accordance with the above specifications, for the sum of a deposit of $2,800, the balance of $2,800, for a total of $5,600 for new switches, and the, and the labor to install them. And we're gonna need these switches for security reasons first and foremost, but second, for the new phone system.
I guess you need to explain, why did, what's the switch do, was it not so outdated that all the new information can't go through it? Why, do we know why?
They explained it, they've ever talked to an IT geek.
He just said that it's very outdated.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's from 2008, which in IT.
That's old.
Yeah, in IT, in IT, the plus was that the village is from 2003, so they're in worshipable way. But anyway, yeah, it's, it's very, it's old and outdated, and they just said it, it, the biggest thing was, we can't do, we can't guarantee the security for credit card payments, those kinds of things that we need to do with that strip, with that switch.
In a 2008 switch, the firmware will probably outdated, and they won't be able to be upgraded.
They did say that, but we can't get, we can't get an upgrade.
You'd have, you'd need a new one.
See, there's a.
Thanks for the interpretation.
He's a geek, he knows what I'm talking about.
I think we should spearhead the program.
There you go.
No, they.
They're gonna want more money, yeah, they're gonna want more money.
We need somebody that knows how to do it.
I know, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's where it is now, if that, if that makes sense to you, and if Charlie makes money. Anywhere, anybody wanna make a motion to spend the 5,600 on your switches?
You have to have it.
I think me and Nancy had this conversation, you know, we've got the same thing at the airport, we've got credit card.
Yes.
Use down there, so.
So talk to them and come back with a number.
See, they're, they're in a little different situation, because I think they're hardwired out there, they're not.
That might be.
But they did say that they would look at yours as well.
Yeah, they were gonna take the town garage in the airport.
We don't have credit cards at the town garage.
No, I understand that, but, but you're gonna get new phones at the town garage.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there may be some improvement there as well, anyway.
So should we wait for him to find out about the airport?
I don't think they're.
And do it as a package?
He's gonna say, security wise.
He's gonna think they're gonna be affected.
What's that?
Security wise for the phone line, you wouldn't, it's only for credit card transaction, data, phone line.
Data. Okay.
He's just got.
Do we have a motion or not?
So moved. I've terminated the motion, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Oh, Tom did.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Second.
You wanna second it, Frank?
I'll second.
All right, Tom is.
Gotta have it.
Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Extention, motion carried. Okay, that's true. That's, let me flip some of this stuff over, so I don't get more confused. I'm easy, easy to confuse. Okay, next up, budget workshops, we did, we already said all those, we don't need to do anything with that. Update, time to see a promotional video. If I get a chance to go down and finish looking at my email, which I'm gonna get to do before I get up here, I believe the latest final version of the video is in my mailbox. I have seen two versions, I think they're pretty impressive, and I think you did a nice job, and I need to go down and get the final approval and send them a form giving final approval. Did somebody, did you see it, my office sent it in?
I did.
We can't, we can't show it publicly yet.
I know, I spent the whole, the whole day with them.
Yeah, that's right. So anyway, it's, it's very, very close, as soon as we approve it, it's gonna get scheduled into the program, it'll be broadcast nationally on Discover, and then it'll be broadcast in 10 regional markets that we picked out, everywhere from Cleveland to Boston to, I can't remember where else that we picked. Okay, Georgette is included for your education, a list of four appointments will be expiring at the end of the year. There are many. We're already taking action on those today, anyway. Transfers and amendments, we got a number of budget transfers and amendments, those are in your packet as well, available for the media if you wanna see them. Anybody wanna, wanna make a motion on the transfers and amendments?
So moved.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Propose, same sign. Extention, motion carries. War number 10, pay the bills.
So moved.
Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Propose, same sign, extension, motion carries. Okay. Financial reports is, as always, are in your packet for the revenue expense, September, and year-to-date fund summary as well. Community reports.
I move that, given the length of the meeting, and we're still going back, but that we suspend these unless they're absolutely necessary.
Just, Frank's ready. I have just one thing in the airport, I think y'all should know that we had a pre-construction meeting today to start the off-airport obstruction work. So that means that we will be going on to properties, private, you know, individuals, as imposed, and this is on the Troutman property, Baxter and Laguna. So be aware of that in case anybody gets a phone call or something, but they all have been contacted and all in agreement on what's going on. So, be aware of that in case anybody gets a phone call or something, but they all, all have been contacted and all in agreement on what's going on. And the survey starts next week and hopefully in the following week, the rebuttal of the obstructions will start.
Uh, rescue squad, hopefully, Eric, do you have a resolution that we can approve?
I dropped it off.
Huh?
I dropped it off.
Yeah, do, do we have a resolution that we can approve for the bank account?
Um, we, we do, but Eric told me that was doing it over there.
Why? Oh, jeez. I'm making it easy, what's today?
Twenty-first.
Yeah, yeah, so we have ten days.
Well, we should have another meeting here.
We meet again next Wednesday.
Yes.
For the budget.
We can take action for all there.
Huh?
We can take action for, if we have a form, we can take action anytime.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Okay, um, again, I would like to, uh, take a ten minute recess and I'll call Andrew by Monday. Want you to do public comment?
Public comment case, somebody wants to say something before they leave.
That's fine, okay, let's do that. We'll, we'll do the public commentary, same rules as before, fifteen minutes, say it and say your name, tell us what you wanna tell us. Any public comments? I'll see you. Okay. I, take a, I entertain a motion to take a ten minute recess.
Nettos.
So move.
Yeah, motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Pretty good.
Do you need to order some cows off from Nettos and watch that?
Nancy, Nancy, feel well, everybody wants to get home. Um, alright, uh, it's been suggested that we go back to the, uh, resolution uh, for the rescue squad bank account, we've all signed the document, all the paper, but, uh, that we approve it pending final approval by the town attorney. So it'd be, it would be approved contingent upon, upon approval with the town attorney, someone wanna make that motion?
So move.
For a second.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion we've already had, I think, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign, extension, motion carries. Good, thank you, let's sort of get back to the budget. Where were we? Oh, Tom, did you wanna add something?
Well, yeah, I, I, are we gonna start right back over and start figuring out what, piece by piece of what we wanna do for, do we wanna put money back in, are we done? Proposal down, do we wanna put money back into DC, are we, are we gonna wait and do that twenty-first?
I think we should do it now, if you wanna do it. In my opinion, right?
It'd probably be good, I, yeah, my opinion would be, try this, cause I don't think anybody has a lot of, you, you've got some proposals plus or minus, and I think we should make them. Because we're gonna have to, Nancy's gotta have time to.
Right.
And we have to approve, uh, what, Georgia preliminary?
You have to approve the tentative, need whatever changes you wanna look at as the preliminary. You'll need, uh.
We have to do that tonight?
Uh, well, it depends on what you wanna do for a schedule here.
What do we have right now, we have another work, another work session on the twenty-eighth, the public hearing and preliminary budget on the fourth.
We haven't said that.
The public hearing?
No, we, cause there was discussion at the last meeting, weren't sure whether or not you.
Yeah.
So we do need to set that if you want to, you know, if you feel that you're at the point.
And a week, a week later on Wednesday is Governor's Day, and then, uh, regular meetings on the seventeenth of November.
Public hearing can't be held any later than, uh, the fifth of November. So I stayed with the Wednesday.
The fifth, it's any later than the third.
Yeah.
Eleven is better, it's fair.
Right.
Right.
Where's those numbers that he proposed?
Where's this? Let's just go down the list and see what everybody thinks.
I agree. Let's get after it.
Okay.
You wanna, uh, set the public hearing right first thing for the fourth? The preliminary budget?
What day is that?
It's a Wednesday, they're all Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, day after election, David.
Yes, right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
November fourth.
I move for, we have a public hearing on November fourth, so.
The governor's budget, okay. Motion and second?
Second.
Five, five, we already got a second, five-thirty, uh, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, sign, extension, motion carries.
Okay, let's just go down through the list. Rescue squad budget. Sounds like everybody was okay with that so far, right?
I will say, um, I don't know, look, I believe they should be paying something. We're taking the fifteen out of their fund balance, so I guess that's something.
Yeah, you're doing, not doing one thing, doing the other, and I think that's.
Where's that fifteen coming out of?
The ambulance fund balance.
And how are we going to put that in next year?
It's gonna go, it can go in anytime when we have extra, uh, uh, resource recovery. I, Tom, I am of the mind that we are buying ambulances too often.
Okay, don't raise your voice, alright.
No, I'm not raising, I'm not, don't need to raise my voice, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Uh, um, I think we spend, we're selling ambulances to have another year or two of service at our level left in them, I believe. And I think the, the schedule we've had has been very aggressive, uh, for replacing them, and, um, I don't know that we need to be that aggressive, but.
I think it's, uh, a better way than what you propose now than, than, than backing that stuff out of the budget. It's what we've done in the past. We've used, we haven't used any in quite a while.
Right.
But in the past, we, we've used some resource recovery money to help offset the budget.
Right.
And we get into, we get in, and, and they don't like it, but they recover from that. When we get into line items in their budget, it becomes much more of a touchy situation, so I think by doing what Joe's proposing, it would be a lot better idea. To restate the budget the way it was, use fifteen thousand of their fund balance. What do you propose tonight?
And that's to cover the library.
But it's to cover, it's to cover whatever.
It just, right.
Your intent was to cover the library, so they don't have to use their capital or their fund balance.
You're still taking fund balance.
My, my intent was to, if we use less than the library fund balance to lessen the impact on the taxpayer.
All that fund balance, library, general A, all that rescue squad money, that's ours.
Right.
So it's all split in different parts, but anytime we want, we can take fund balance from any of those funds.
That's cool.
So you're really just a shell game, moving money, you know.
False sense of security.
Oh.
What's a false sense of?
Well, for the live, you know, they think that that's their money, right, the hundred and three thousand. You know, it's a false sense of security for them.
Everybody.
It's a false sense of security for the rescue squad, they're thinking that that's their part of money that.
Yes.
They have at their own part of money, which is a whole separate.
Yeah, that's a whole separate discussion, so.
But that, that resource recovery is town money.
And we're beyond that, they understand that.
And the library says that, that their fund balance is a mixture of friends of the library contribution and town money.
That can't be.
That's.
No, no, that's, that's that money that they have in, in the bank separate, that we consider.
I read that in, in the paper the other day, and I did not think that that was true.
Elaine believes that is all one part of money.
No, I don't think it's true either.
Well, I'm.
Never has been true.
She told me today that.
I think she's, she's a little confused. Trust, trust and agency has that in a separate fund account.
I thought so too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they used to have a bunch of CDs.
They do, and that's not part of that fund balance that we show in this budget.
That's in the packet that we get.
The money, do they still get Bushnell money every year?
Yeah, that goes in their L, L fund.
That goes in the L fund.
But when you get people that specifically bequeath, bequeathed, is that how you say it, money? Um, it has, it's held in a separate account and it's in a trusted agency fund, it's called a T fund.
It's not in the.
That's not even part of this whole.
How much do they have?
Oh, they've probably got a hundred thousand.
They used to have quite a bit, but usually it's, it, it's earmarked with the bequeaths.
Right, like that.
Like it can only be used for.
Right, it's not all.
Kids in the child room or something like that.
And fifty thousand of it is a tax exempt bond, that they can only spend the interest on for upgrades to the library, so that cuts it right in half. And the other money, a lot of it, CDs they purchased with money that the friends of the library have given them, that they do transfer to their journal fund for purchases.
Yeah. So it does, it, it, that money does not show up in, on their budget.
No.
And here's a question I have as well. It's not committing to the budget, so.
I mean, so, rescue squad, we're good with that?
What are we?
Form a motion or kind of, kind of agree on it?
Let's go vote on each one, and get it over quick.
I think so.
Okay, rescue squad, budget. I vote yes.
Yes.
So, so the, okay, we, I guess we're doing basically straw balls, we're not formal votes, but.
Yeah, straw.
Yeah, we're all in agreement.
That way we'll get this thing done.
Is everyone opposed to that, I guess, was the question? Okay?
No, okay, number one, that, that's done. Increased BDC allocation, seventy-five hundred dollars, that would take it from seventy-five thousand to eighty-two-five. Which was their, Tom Sullivan's request.
I'm not opposed to that, I will say, I was very disappointed with the BDC, and what I said in my email, the BDC chose not to take Tom up on his offer for a reduction in selling.
I don't disagree with you. But, no. Uh, I, I still think we need to do this because it, but.
I'm not gonna oppose it.
But, uh, I'm sprout. I don't, I appreciate, I appreciate that Tom was willing to do that.
Me too, absolutely, and I was gonna ask him that night, but I didn't, cause I didn't think it was appropriate to do it. But here's what I will ask, that if we do this, we get some goddamn reports, we get some reports what they do and don't do, who they do and don't talk to, who weren't successful.
That's, I, I say it again, I was upset at some of the comments in this article.
I agree.
In the paper.
I agree.
And I don't think that, you know, that we can continue to fund them at, at the level, at the level we are now, unless we have some tangible results. And I don't care about confidentiality or anything, the buck stops with us.
Yeah.
Alright, we're the confidentiality. And this, this type of thing.
I agree.
The, the, the agency.
We gave, we gave two years.
The agency would tap into its one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar contingency fund.
And, and John points out that about five years ago, we told them they had two years to do something, and we've never fought, we've never held them to that.
Because we've never enforced it.
That's what I'm saying, we've never held them to that.
We'll do it.
And, and the only thing that I, I said in a conversation with somebody the other day, here's my concern if we don't have a BDC. If somebody comes to town and says, I'm thinking about building a water park in your town, where do I send it, where do we send it?
Well, first of all, you don't skip one link in the chain of command, first of all, they would go to you or Timmy Curry.
I agree.
Or to Georgia.
Then, but then who, then who do we refer them to for any assistance they might need as far as demographics, logistical information? Send to the county planning board, the county IDA?
The county IDA or, uh, you know, depending on what, what they're here for, uh, the regional economic development council.[1731.91]